All right, the time is now 7:32 PM and I'd like to call the July 27th, 2022 Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees meeting to order. The Downers Grove Public Library land acknowledgement is a living statement resulting from conversations and collaboration with Native organizations and individuals. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Quintia?
Here.
Trustee Nefer?
Here.
President Kagami? Here. I'd like to welcome our visitors to the library. Thank you for joining our meeting.
I don't know if this is interrupting Roberts or Per Roberts' order, but I wanted to say I really appreciate the Indigenous people's statement, because I remember that one that was being voted on by the village and how they designated and thought that the library is an appropriate place for that to reside. But it's a period. That said, I was wondering if we could also include the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of our meetings? I think as I've thought about the concept of the library and the fact that we're, we have such a wonderful system in the United States and are both to the Constitution, that would be appropriate there.
Kind of the procedure.
We can definitely do that. The present. No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
It's early.
Just add it in. As a matter of fact, I will add that to our call to order and list those. Madam President, I'm going to decide if that is appropriate or not.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of new territory for me, so I'm kind of blurring as I go, being the third meeting.
Yes.
Let's speak, President. Yeah, is that something that I would go ahead and say after the?
You can take a cue from, yeah, that's fine. I think it's any point. I mean, we take a cue from the village and do it at the start.
Yeah. All right, well, let's go ahead and edit now if that works.
Sure.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the goodness of the liberty and justice of God.
Thank you for considering that.
Yeah.
I think it's good to recognize the balance between the sins of our past and the good of our nation.
All right, item number four, approval of minutes. Anyone have any questions, comments?
There were a couple of things that, I don't know whether how to affect this, but a couple of things that were missing from the minutes that I would personally, I'd like to see if we could add on, if we can do that after the fact or sure?
Yes.
Whether we have to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, I can just quickly get what they are. I think in the public comments, there was a question to me about why I joined the library board and they nailed two out of the three. The third one was to support the library and its evolution for the preparation for the future. The motion that I made with respect to the capital improvement, that's not seconded, but that dialogue was not captured in there. And at the end, the, my attempt to be helpful as an outsider and note that the audio visual over the village circuit TV was difficult to hear, wasn't apparently, I don't know if we have new equipment today, but.
We've actually adjusted the HVAC in the room so that it's not blowing the way it did, and then we moved the mic forward to see if that, if that takes care of the problem or if we need a larger fix.
That's also a new mic, just makes the previous ones, but just although it's all of them like, you know, wear a pair.
Nice, thanks for. I admit not to know in the right protocol here whether to table this until the next meeting or move to, I think I've been in the past, there's been a motion to approve as amended.
Yes, yeah, yes. And that's generally how we do it, and then the updated minutes will be in the next packet so that you can see what those changed.
There are no other changes, I will accept the minutes as amended. Second.
Caitlin, can we proceed with roll call?
Yes.
Oh, actually.
Voice vote, right?
Yes.
Hi.
All those favor?
Aye.
And a yes, aye. All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, item five, financial matters.
Well, we have financial reports. I will comment that our issues with Munis do continue and we are struggling to get the reports we need from Munis. And in addition, in particular with this set of minutes, Caitlin ran them once and there was one set of numbers and she ran them a second time and it was different. So we're pursuing that with the village, but this is, to the best of our knowledge, the financials for through June 30. I also wanted to note that in line 5870, which is our capital improvements over $20,000, that next month you will see a change in the audit. The village auditor decided that we needed to reclassify an expense that we actually paid in December of 2021, which was the down payment for the tables, the new table project. And if you recall, we had decided to spread that project over to fiscal years deliberately because of the cost of, the overall cost of the project. Well, the village auditor decided that that, both of those payments needed to be reflected in the 2022 budget, so that capital, the capital expenses over $20,000 will go over budget in 2022, but it also means that our 2021 numbers were corrected to not have that amount in there. It comes out in the wash because it winds up being out of the fund balance that was left at the end of 2021. But just so you know, that will put that budget line 5870 significantly over budget for this year. And then, so this is the June financials, so that's 50% through the year. As you can see, our property taxes, the first half posted, so our revenues are at 54.77%. And that isn't even all of the postings of the first half property taxes, so we will, those will be coming in over the course of the next month or so. So you should see another jump in the July. And then I also wanted to direct your attention to the personal property replacement taxes. We have gotten significantly more in personal property replacement taxes than expected. This is, there's an explanation in the budgets about what this is. This actually was, replaces something that went to local governments pre-Illinois state income tax. And so this was a means of the state to replace those funds for units of local government. A couple of years ago, the state of Illinois had been holding back a quite bit of those funds, and there was some movement by the Illinois Municipal League to stop that from happening. They are continuing that fight, and so they have significantly reduced the amount that the state has been taking back. They do not release the estimates for personal property replacement tax until mid to late August, so very often, as last year, we didn't have those estimates in time to do our budget. This year, we're still waiting to see if they put those forth. And to further complicate matters, the state's fiscal year is of course July 1 to June 30, so we get half of the prior fiscal year and half of the current fiscal year in any given year. So it's, but on the positive side, I, all indications are that that will continue to, are expected to increase next year, so that would be.
They just, they eventually pay the 2020 holdbacks, right? I think they eventually paid those.
Theoretically.
Yeah. How is that, once they decide on the amount, does that, is that paid immediately or is that metered?
No, it is metered out and if the, oh gosh.
So the year-to-date revenue showing are from past whatever grants or?
Yes, and they meter it out, they, it's an irregular schedule, so they give it out like seven times a year, plus ours is a percentage of what the village gets. So the village receives it and then they post that percentage to the library. So it's a pretty convoluted process, but we get money out of it, so.
And for the record, let the convoluted nature, let it be noted that that's very appropriate for the state of Illinois.
Yes. Fairly typical.
And it's been going on for, when did that tax get enacted? Back in the seventies, I think?
Yes, it was the PPRT started coming to libraries in the 1970s.
Yeah.
So, yeah, for, I should say, units of local government, yeah. And on the expenditure side, we're at 44.21% expended. I don't think there are any surprises or anything that we did not go over last year out of what's going on with the expenditures, the lines that are over kind of the expected amounts. 53.8, the staff recognition line, is at 73%, partially due to all those retirement parties we've been having recently. We've had a significant number of staff retire and adjacent to that is 5322 personnel recruitment, which is also up because we've had a lot of hiring recently. And then I think you, I think all the rest are pretty self-explanatory.
These reports come out of Munis?
Yes, out of Munis.
So the percent used, that's also a Muni kind of a standard thing? Is that, using that as a measurement assumes that our budget is even?
Yes, and it's not.
It's a little.
Yeah, it's deceptive.
And that's just a Munis limitation?
It's purely calendar.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's actually now.
No, I put that on because that's.
It was, it was, and Eden, the predecessor of Munis was Eden, and that was included in our regular expenditure reports in Eden.
Right.
And so the board had gotten used to seeing that, so when we transferred to getting these reports from Munis, we have recreated that line to give us a sense of where we are.
Do we think it would be better to, because I'm assuming our budget is time phased by month or by quarter or something like that, right? Would it be better to show potentially performance to budget instead of just a strictly calendarized spend rate?
I'm not sure what we can and can't get out of Munis at this point.
Okay, I think we can just take that as a follow, a research item?
Yeah.
Because it is kind of misleading, you'd get a big surprise at the end of the year. I'm sure we don't, but.
In general, a lot of our lines are front-loaded rather than back.
I was gonna say, I feel like a lot of the service contracts and life insurance and all those.
Yeah.
I think we're kind of used to seeing them at like 80% or something.
In January, February.
Right, and then they kind of just table off.
So don't you think you'd want to see some kind of like quarterly variance report?
Something like that, yeah.
Variance based just on calendar, would that still assume?
If you had a budget, a budget to date.
What we'd have to do is each line would have to be examined and, the calendar.
Let's see what we can get out of Munis.
Yeah, because I'm admittedly applying my QuickBooks paradigms to this and I'm guessing Munis might not be as flexible, but.
I wish it was as intuitive as QuickBooks, but it is not.
I'd be interested in researching.
I'd be certainly interested in seeing those, but not if it requires a significant amount of staff time, because I think we've kind of gotten used to the variances and you will very quickly, I think, because so many other things are front-loaded.
Well, and if that's a report that we can get and the other report is a report we weren't getting, maybe we'll just get used to the report we can get so that staff are recreating the older one.
Cool, I'm good, I just wanted to bring it up and make sure I was interpreting it right. I'm happy with researching.
I was curious just about a quick line, revenue line, item 4502, charges for services. I know that's kind of a catch-all for.
It is a miscellaneous line.
Yeah.
It includes $20,000 of a gray bar refund that we received, and it also includes $6,000 from the foundation to cover the social work intern stipends.
Oh, okay.
So that really makes up a good chunk of it.
What line, what accounts that?
Charges for services, revenue 4502.
So it's miscellaneous then plus all of the money we get from photocopying, printing, all of that, which is a sizable, adds up, but.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so yeah, so it's a negative item on the revenue, right? Oh no, sorry, I was looking at the balance column, sorry.
And we used that.
We just got a lot more money in the budget.
Yeah.
It's, that's a budget line item that's difficult to predict because you don't know how much revenue you're going to get from foundations and things like that.
Right, or like refunds or, you know, things like that, yeah.
So that, I saw that earlier, that's not things like the 3D printing and those kinds of services?
It is.
It's also.
3D printing, poster printing, and, oh no. That's all sale materials.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the miscellaneous.
Cool. Okay. Any other questions or comments on financial matters? We don't have too many invoices to fill.
Bill had some questions earlier and he sent those to me in advance and I was able to walk him through. Yeah, on the invoices of note, the longer you've been on the board, the more you're used to who the book jobbers are and that sort of thing, and we had brought Bill up to speed on the, yes, there are always a huge pile of Ingram in.
Right.
And that is all books.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Morgan. You also, she also indicated whether they were monthly expenses or quarterly or periodic and the follow-up question on whether they were regular monthly or variable monthlies. That was helpful, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for the financials is presented.
I will second. We have a motion and a second, can we proceed with roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yes.
Trustee Nefer?
Yes.
President Kagami?
Yes.
That motion is yes. Item six on the agenda, public comment on agenda items.
And then the other library business?
And item number seven, public comments on other library businesses.
Is that me?
That's you.
Okay, thank, thank you. My name is Ken Lerner, I'm with the Pierce Downers Heritage Alliance, and I was here a couple, few months ago to talk about the notion that we wanted to sponsor a memorial planting and plaque to Betty Cheever, former mayor of Downers Grove, who had a substantial role in preserving Lyman Woods, which benefits us all to this day, and also did substantial work with the library, I think. And so with the general concept approval from the board then, work has been proceeding apace to make the arrangements, and Julie has been working with our board member Sue Farley on the arrangements, and they've got a planting in over in the little garden area at the corner, and there is a plaque in the works to Betty Cheever and noting the couple items that I mentioned that we're thanking her for. And so it's been, it's been, it's been great working with Julie and we have the plaque as, you know, we got the proofs for the plaque, looks very good, and, and so at the risk of messing up the financial statement, we would like to make a donation of $1,000 to help offset the costs for, some of the costs for the, for the plaque. And so, thank you very much. And we, we will be, there's a dedication to the memorial scheduled for September 10th. I hope everyone can be there, and we'll be publicizing it through our channels, the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance, we have a, you know, just a mailing list, and I don't know if the library is going to be putting it in the newsletter or something like that as well, but I figure the more the merrier. And I actually also wanted to ask Trustee Humphreys if this might be an item to note for the first congregation, congregational church in terms of the memorial for Betty on September 10th. I think Betty and Lyle are members.
Oh, yes. Lyle still is.
Yeah, okay, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, what would you like the church to do?
So.
I mean, you can publicize it.
We'll be doing like a little dedication ceremony for the plaque and the planting on September 10th, it's a Saturday. And so just want to make sure everyone who might have an interest in that is aware of it, you know, so.
Sure, you might send me an email or something.
Yeah, okay.
Forward the press release to us and we'll make sure that it's disseminated wide.
Okay. That happens to be the same weekend as the Fine Arts Festival in downtown.
Perfect.
Interesting coincidence.
That should work, that should work.
Also, the Downers Grove Historical Society is doing a walking tour of downtown churches that day. I think that's in the late morning, we might try to avoid that kind of.
Ooh, okay.
You might check with the Historical Society.
Yeah, you know, I don't recall what time we have it scheduled for, but yes, cool. We have a time, but it's not necessarily set in stone just yet, but.
That would be the Historical Society.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Our PR manager, Cindy Catry, who is here in the audience, would like to get a photo for the, so that that press release gets a picture in our next newsletter.
I think it's gonna get done that way.
Oh, gosh.
So if you don't mind, just a quick picture, that way we can put it on our Facebook and.
We, should we have the envelope?
We'll do the envelope.
I knew we should have gotten one of those big giant.
No.
There we go, we need money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a comment, the Pierce Downer Heritage Alliance has been a very positive force in our community for a long time, and thank you very, very much.
Happy to do it.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of Morgan, we really appreciate, you know, the donation and the dedication to.
It's, yeah, we were looking for a place to place the memorial and, you know, talked to Lyle and, and this location came up as, and it just really seemed ideal. So I'm really happy that we're able to make use of the garden space there.
Betty was a big fan of this library and I have a lot to owe her because she's the one that got me involved into Downers Grove activities at that level, and the library board kind of followed on that along with some other village commissions and so forth, so I have a lot to thank her for. And just a side comment, if you recall, the city council chambers in the new village hall will be named the Betty Cheever Council Chambers.
Looking forward to the September 10th dedication.
Good.
We've got item number eight, new business. Item 8A, suspension of library privileges appeal.
All right, as you all have, the board has received all the information and the video, Mr. Clifford Knickie has asked that his one-year suspension from the library premises be reviewed by the Board of Library Trustees. According to our policies, your review is final, and this decision was made, we, according to the guidelines that we have for suspension of library privileges. So if you have any questions?
I'll start. I struggled with this. It felt, it feels like we're jumping right to the maximum offense and, or the maximum penalty, whether? I think the behavior was objectively odd. I read the Illinois statute description of lewd behavior. I don't think it fits that definition, and by jumping right to a year, just looking at the Building Operations Monitor Manual, we're placing that offense ahead of some pretty, pretty serious behavior, pretty seriously offensive behavior. So I, and if I'm understanding, there was no prior warning given, right, about to Mr., sorry, to Knickie?
Not about that behavior.
Not about the behavior. And the two incidents, the incident reports for him were, did not result in any suspensions, correct?
There were, this was the third incident, the first incident, now I'm getting them out of order. One of them was a warning, one of them he was asked to leave for the day.
For the day, yeah.
But both of those dealt with very different behaviors.
So, I mean, there's, there's certainly like a pattern of disruptive behavior. This one feels a little bit victimless, although as I said, very, a little odd. I'm also sensitive to, you know, and I asked, full disclosure, I asked Julie if there's any history of known mental illness, and I'm not trying to play doctor here or psychologist here, but given that it is odd behavior and given that there were two prior incidents, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, you know, people sometimes need help and that penalizing behavior can sometimes drive them to a darker place, and I wonder whether we come up with something that's a little bit more of a middle ground in terms of the penalty, and maybe if it's possible, I know the village has some social services that he may avail himself of, and maybe a strong recommendation. So I struggle with it, it's weird, but victimless, didn't rise to the level of lewd behavior by the letter of the law, and the penalty leaps ahead of some other very serious behavior. So that's, that's where I came down. I'm not sure what the right term of suspension of privileges is. And I also have one background question. Have we, or anyone ever, has there ever been a court challenge of a suspension to a public facility like this?
Only for lifetime bans. That's why our maximum ban is one year. The courts, lifetime bans were challenged, the court said that lifetime is too long, it's got to be a shorter amount of time, and eventually the one-year and can be extended beyond that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is what, is what the case law actually says now for libraries.
All right, so just to wrap it up, I think, I think it would be more appropriate to give a more proportional penalty than a full-year ban, which is the maximum. a more proportional penalty than a full-year ban, which is the maximum.
I'll echo a couple of the things that you said, Bill. I mean, I also read the description of the lewd conduct of public decency. I didn't feel like that met those exact criteria. Disturbing, would I want to watch it again? No, yes, absolutely. But I didn't, in terms of that particular kind of assignment of offense, I didn't think that was quite the right kind of place. I also want to take a quick note, yeah, obviously there have been repeated incidents. And so that's something, I wonder, I didn't see it in the documents that you shared with us, and maybe it doesn't exist, or, or maybe hopefully for a good reason. But, you know, is there some kind of, kind of three strikes, you're out? Or is there some kind of like escalating system of, yeah, you've done this, there's a warning? And I know that it depends, it's nature of the offense, absolutely, there's something like, absolutely, no, you're done. But in terms of this, where maybe this offense doesn't rise to that, you know, that criteria, is there another level of suspension, a level of, you know, not punishment, but level of penalty, I think, that would be more appropriate? But also to, you know, respecting that staff have to deal with this issue, staff have to deal with repeated issues. And we want to make sure to, you know, demonstrate that we're serious about keeping our staff safe and keeping the public safe, but that, in my mind, again, it didn't quite fit that one, like jumping right to one year, especially over some of these, some of the other ones that are on here that are out, even at like three months or six months are pretty serious.
We've struggled with, yeah, what is the appropriate response to various kinds of behavior? And for this particular behavior, for him to have his hand in his pants for that long, for, it was just by chance that no parent, that no child walked out of the kids' room at that time. He was standing in the vestibule, fully visible, and Danny was actively watching the security cameras at the time. So to say he was not seen doing this is not true. And also because if anyone could have walked in from outside during that time. It is only by merest chance that Danny was the only one who witnessed.
And just so everybody in the public knows, it was in the back of his pants, so we've got to make sure. And that's why I struggled. Like, I saw nothing in the video that gave me the sense that it, there was, there was any sexual intent. I don't know what the heck he was doing, I'd love to know.
Wouldn't like to know.
You might know one.
No.
I wonder maybe he's got a condition or something, I don't know. I just think it's a slippery slope, right? There's other, there's other, I could conceive of other instances where, if you, if you take him at the, at his word and he was adjusting his undergarments, are we going to start penalizing people for a year for adjusting their undergarments? And where does that, or do you draw that line?
I mean, it's-
Definitely warrants a penalty, but I-
Yeah. It's challenging because I don't think you can necessarily say it wasn't sexual. And we don't know his intent. I mean, I don't think the direction of where his pants were determines what is sexual in nature or not. It was victimless by chance that no child was walking in or out, or someone wasn't walking by, because it was two glass doors. So, you know, he just got lucky at that point that the only person watching it was, you know, unfortunately Daniel. Sorry, that probably moved his week, but, but I, the other flip side is, you know, the last thing I want to do is undermine the monitors and the procedures that they have in place and, and make them feel like everything that they, you know, deem is then, you know, going to be second guessed by the board trustees. It's just tough because we don't know his intent. Do I think 14 seconds is an obscenely long time to fix your undergarments? Yes. Do I think there was more to it? Yes. But in terms of just by definition of lewd, I don't think it fits. And so, I mean, I just, I still, to this moment, don't really know what to do in this instance.
I agree. I just think that we don't even know if no one saw, right? I mean, there was a, there was a sidewalk outside, and someone could have been walking by and looked in and thought, hmm, I'm not going to head into the library today. I don't, we just don't know. There's so many factors. I do wish, as maybe, as Chris said, that there was like a system that we had in place that was maybe even a little more, I, but these are all, it almost feels broad to me then, because it's such a specific thing that happened, and that's not when I'm like looking for like a thing. And then if there's a person who's doing specific things and it isn't like, okay, this person has done these three things, and now this is the third thing that has been deemed as inappropriate or whatever we're looking for. I've been struggling with it since we got your email, to be honest with you as well. It feels like a year is a really long time, but then it also feels like what he was doing, because we don't know his intent, maybe warrants it. I'm totally at a loss what we should be doing, to be honest with you.
Defense of the manual would have been difficult to anticipate this one.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Quite frankly, Bill, given the history and types of incidents, I would never attempt to try to make it specific, to codify all of them. Because just what you think you have, they'll come up with something new.
Yep, yep. I want to address the under, sorry, you guys haven't had a chance to speak, I'm about to start, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I was just going to comment that I don't quite agree that it was victimless because we aren't sure that it was victimless. People walking by, riding the vestibule, which is all windows, and who knows, he was darting in and out of the lobby at that time or something. So we don't know what he did or not, but, and I, I struggle with the video as well. This is an adult audience here, but the fact that he used the hand sanitizer immediately before complicates it a little bit in my head. I could also say that the maximum penalty sounds a little bit bad, but on the other hand, we have a lot of people in the library staff who might feel, might get a little nervous to have that kind of activity around without some kind of a penalty. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit as well, but I, in the absence of more detailed information, I think I can support the staff's decision, but I could probably be pushed a little bit in the other direction as well, to be honest with you. It's a very difficult, I think one of the most troubling things I've got on board. It's also the first time anybody has appealed, ever.
Could you elaborate on the process to determine the penalty? Because that wasn't decided that night, right? Because I know, I want to be clear about the concept of undermining staff. I don't think that's what any of us want to do, but the, and I don't want to undermine the confrontation of the incident. I think what we're doing here is evaluating and with the, with the benefit of time passing, evaluating the penalty, which I don't think by its nature undermines the staff necessarily.
We took Daniel's report and Ian, Mr. Knickie left immediately following the incident, and it was shortly before close, so it happened at like 8:30 at night. So it wasn't until the next morning that building operations director Ian Nor and I reviewed, and the administration staff reviewed the footage and had to make a determination of where this fit. And by that time, quite a few staff had read, the PITS report had gone out that night, so quite a few staff were asking what, what was going to happen.
Did that include the video?
No, that, that one included a still picture, but the video was shared only with-
And that's okay.
I think that's appropriate. That kind of stuff should be circulated broadly. Is there a, is there, I don't see it right out to the bat, but is there a misuse of library equipment kind of a level here? Library facilities and equipment?
Inappropriate use of furniture, like maybe-
There's an inappropriate use of furniture, but that tends to be more like-
The kids, oh, not kids, anybody, sorry.
The rolling chair releases and, and standing on tables kind of a thing.
I mean, furniture, obviously furniture doesn't fit, but it's the spirit of that. It's a library facility, library area, albeit the entrance area. Maybe that's a more appropriate match. I don't know, I can't find that one either, but.
That's just a verbal warning. I don't think that's a particular one.
Well, he's had two verbal warnings for other unrelated incidents, so I think there's, that's not appropriate either.
I think he should probably have got some level of guard, he should have known that there were, I mean, he's a frequent enough user of the library, knows about the cameras and things like that. But, I don't know, it's very troubling, but.
In this kind of a situation, is there, once the penalty is decided, is there, is there a dialogue with the patron? Is there an opportunity for a conversation, or is that just communicates?
He did call me. Once he was issued the ban, he was able to speak to, actually it was Danny who got to issue the ban the next day. At the time, I was not available, but we needed to give him my card, and he sort of thinking he called me later that same day.
Did, was it?
And we had a conversation.
Did he express remorse or regret?
No, his, he simply stated that he was adjusting his undergarments.
I have to feel like if you wanted to suspend-
Oh, they, they have it. Yeah, yes, we sure did share that.
I'm going to go ahead and just in the interest of maybe moving us to a conclusion. There's a, under the three-month penalty tier, there's an abusive derogatory language, verbal, sexual, racial, or street harassment directed at staff or patron. This, you know, I think you have to have a pretty broad definition of victimhood to say that this had a victim. I think saying that this had the potential to be harassing is not too much of a stretch. Maybe that's an appropriate level. So I'll go ahead and make that motion, just in the interest of moving us forward. Motion to set the penalty at a three-month suspension of privileges.
We have a motion to amend the suspension to three months. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
You second.
I will. All right, we have a second. Caitlin, can you proceed?
Yes. Trustee Dorni?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
No.
Trustee Kutiya?
No.
Trustee Nefer?
Yes.
President Jacoby?
Yes.
So the yes is happening.
Julie, you can convey to the staff that this is not, this is not intended to undermine the penalty.
We struggle.
And, you know, my vote is pretty much based on that, I worry about, and maybe I'm worrying too much, but about the safety of our staff members and how we view that is, how am I in your line of concern? But as I, as I said, I'm troubled by the defense, so I will support the decision.
I would echo what Dave just said. For me, it's, it's about the staff, and it was 8:30 at night, and I feel like, you know, maybe someone could have seen him. But obviously, however the vote goes is, is what we will do. I just, I feel like I should say that I disagree with that, but.
Right, agenda item 8B, 23 budget levy dress.
This is actually the long one.
Right. So you all have in your packets for anyone who's just following along.
I'm sure this is going to be great.
I will refer to the page numbers in the packet for anyone who's bumbling along on their own. So I did present three different levels of tax levy for the revenue side, but the budgeted expenditures are identical in all three drafts. I do want to say that on the expenditure side, there will be some updates to staffing and the staff benefits that will be coming as we are filling, actively filling positions right now with all those retirements, et cetera, and having those new individuals elect benefits which may change some of those numbers. So you will see some updates to those numbers in the August, and that will be, to the best of our knowledge, up to the minute. On the expenditure side, we'll start there. And as you can see, we do have an overall percentage increase to the staff, this is just the staff and benefits portion, and that is a 5.7% increase. You will also see, there will be another change between salaries non-exempt and part-time employee wages as we've taken an opportunity to make another full-time position from a position that had been a retirement. And a retirement and someone else getting a job, so we're folding a couple, two jobs together to make one full-time and one lesser part-time. So there's all, a lot of moving parts to this. Also, we've been looking at the renewal numbers for a number of other library-centric Blue Cross Blue Shield groups and their insurance renewals. We did take that percentage down to 20% at this point. We are hoping to have a better feel for the possible renewal rate for our own group by that August meeting that the village will have with their partner. So that is also a moving target. And then down, going way too fast. What's easier on my, the computer in my office, buddy? Okay. So here, a little smaller so you can see it more. All right, so on the non-personnel lines, it is actually a 6.9% increase on all, on the non-salary and benefits lines. The most, the biggest drivers of this, if you look at line 53, 03, conferences, seminars, and meetings, that is over a 12% increase, and that is due mostly to the change in mileage and- and, um, meal, uh, meeting costs. Then in the fifty three twenty two, or I'm sorry, fifty three fifteen, professional services, I wrote that down wrong. Um, that's, that increase reflects, um, doing the update to our, um, salary structure. So using the consultant for that, the strategic plan consultant, our EDI consultant. This is also where outside programs, um, comes from. So any of the, the programs that we pay for also comes out of that line. So that is, um, reflected in that line. The biggest difference in this whole budget is fifty three eighty, printing services, adding ninety percent increase. That is returning to our twelve page, um, discoveries newsletter that is mailed to homes six times per year. During the pandemic, we had rolled back several of those issues, actually most of those issues, to eight pagers because we just didn't have the programming for a lot of those. Now that our programming has come back, we are ramping back up to the twelve pager. In addition, our costs on that have increased more than thirteen percent so far this year. And so this reflects not only the, um, the increase in the, going back to twelve pages, it also reflects a possible increase of up to thirteen percent for next year as well. So that we are, we are sure we're able to do this. Um, we did a marketing survey recently and found that a significant portion of our, uh, our residents get their library information from the hard copy mailed issue of the discoveries. So we really felt that that was important to include in this budget. And again, along, oh, shoot. No, stop. I pushed. Related is also postage. Um, we are expecting two increases of two cents, uh, per piece in the next year. So that is reflected there. Also, uh, both in the printing and postage lines, to be able to do a separate targeted mailing, probably about the strategic plan sometime in twenty twenty three. Um, and then in fifty four seventy, other equipment repair and maintenance, that is, I keep hitting that same button. Unfortunately, the source button is right under my little laser pointer. So, um, this is the increase for the pickup lockers. Um, as you know, our budget cycle is so far in advance that when we make changes, it often takes us eighteen months to get something new into the budget. So this is the maintenance contract for the pickup lockers. So. Those are all of the highlights on the expenditures side. Oh, wait, no, it's not. Sorry, my notes go on to the second page and I forgot about that. Um, down here in our fifty eight fifty one, electronic resources, fifty eight fifty two, print materials and fifty eight fifty three, AV materials. Those are all of our library materials. And as you can see, there is an increase in electronic resources of over, of over eleven percent. Print materials only at three point two percent, but a decrease in AV materials. Basically, that is both adult and kids making some adjustments within materials budgets. So they're taking, as we're moving away from a lot of our AV formats, they're moving that money to electronic resources by and large. Um, so eBooks, e-audio, our e-magazines, um, databases, we're just adding comics plus. So, um, the aggregate change is five percent among those lines. So if you add them all up, what we did last year, what we did this year, the aggregate change is five percent among those lines. And then in capital equipment, over twenty thousand, which is fifty eight seventy, that's an over eight percent increase. That is simply what we anticipate paying more for, um, our ongoing furniture replacements. As, uh, those of you who've been on the board for a while know, uh, we left furniture replacements out of the capital needs assessment and instead decided to start doing an annual rollover in the regular budget and to be doing pieces at a time. That's why we did the tables last year. The meeting room chairs are slated to, are probably the next thing to be done. Um, so that is where we are at with those. And then of course, fifty eight eighty, which is intangible assets, which means software, um, this is a lot of our software subscriptions, um, and that is also over eight percent. And we just anticipate that that is the direction that a lot of our ongoing costs are headed.
Just an observation on that page before you leave it. First of all, a comment maybe for Bill for anybody new. I guess we don't have too many new people in the room.
I think Ed's been through this a few times.
But these budget category names are, it's, it's basically the village budget system.
Yes.
And the library is a little different than most of the village departments. And so the, sometimes our stuff fits into a budget category that has a name that doesn't seem very closely related to what it really is. So that takes a little getting used to, but.
Same on the revenue side as you were asking.
Oh, yeah.
Costs for recovered services.
It's very normal for somebody who hasn't looked at this for a few years, wondering what the heck does that name mean? And why is this in that category and stuff like that? So it's bugging me sometimes, but it, it works. Just a general comment is, to be brutally honest, I expected a lot of these numbers and percentages to be higher because of the incredible inflation pressures we're under. And I hope that a year from now, we're not choking with being over these. I realize that you do your best to estimate and we have consultants to help us with that. And we have the village departments who help us with these predictions. But, um, well, when I look at the price of food at the store and the price of gas and the price of, uh, labor in general, I'm not talking labor here, but all of the people we buy things with, labor is built into all of these costs, of course. And so.
And our managers have done a wonderful job in talking to our vendors and really trying to get a handle on what they are anticipating for the next year as well.
Well, that was my question because I know that that's, that always changes at the whim of the vendors to some extent. And it's a safe assumption that they try to budget advance and they need to adjust as well. So in terms of those like subscription services, databases, some of these things that we pay annually for, how, how sourd are those numbers they did here? I know, I know they can't be one hundred percent because we don't get those bills until September or October.
For a lot of these, this is best guess. This is what our sales reps are telling us to anticipate for next year. Or, um, things like for, uh, like in the electronic resources where Lizzie is anticipating not only where she thinks all of the, those subscriptions will go, but also kind of has in the back of her mind worst case scenario and what we could, there are some things that are useful that could possibly be cut if the worst case scenario comes through. So if no one else has any, um, any questions on the expenditures side. I'll just jump right down here for one minute. Um, as you know, the standards for Illinois public libraries changed recently and went from a model where they had basic percentages for, um, salaries, benefits and materials. That was, um, fifty to sixty percent of your budget in salaries, uh, ten to fifteen percent in benefits and twelve percent in materials. This newest version of the, uh, of the standards changed it to using the annual Illinois Public Library Annual Report Percentage Analysis. And that is a statewide aggregate of what libraries are spending their budgets on. Um, and so our statewide average for salaries is fifty percent. For benefits, it's fourteen. Um, salaries and benefits together is sixty four. Um, we are at seventy one point six. As we know, we pay excellent benefits, um, and that is one of the things that keeps us up there. Um, in addition to being in, uh, this, with a statewide budget analysis, we are looking at tiny downstate libraries as well as those of us up here in the more expensive suburbs. And then with the materials, it is statewide average is five percent for print materials. We're at five point five percent, four percent for electronic materials. We're at four point two, and that's with that, um, large increase this year. And then, um, the other materials, that's AV really. And it says one percent, we do one, two point one percent. Um, we do have a lot of other materials. This also counts things, our things, like literally our library of things, the STEM kits and the memory kits and all of those other, um, dibs and bobs that we, we loan out to people. And then our largest actual difference from the statewide expenditures average is the all others expenditures aggregate. And that is at twenty five percent statewide. Ours is only sixteen point five. So, um, we spend, we spend our money on people and items that we circulate and we try to keep the rest of the operation pretty lean. And I think it was reflected here. However, it's also interesting to note that most libraries in the state of Illinois are district libraries. Library districts are a little bit different and they operate independently. However, village and city libraries have the advantage that most of us are on our city or village franchise agreement for electricity. So the one utility we pay zero for is electricity, thank God. So that also helps keep that all other expenditures much lower because we don't have to pay for electricity. And I think it's one of the things that, that may wind up being a little deceptive in the over, in using those overall, um, IBLAR percentage analysis. So I just thought that that would be interesting to you all. And then. And then that's, that's how it looks on a graph. That's our expenditures. Um, so it's mostly people.
Just, just one observation, the risk of interrupting, but, uh, I think you touched on it, but I, I have to remind myself when I'm comparing our salary percentage with all libraries in the state and reminding myself that we don't really compete personnel wise with libraries of most of the state.
Yes.
Because, uh, the people who work for us tend to be in a labor pool, to use the term, of large libraries.
Yes.
And in large, larger metropolitan areas of the state. And it costs more to hire people in those areas.
And also non library customer service positions because of a large proportion of our staff. Fully one third of our staff are circulation clerks. And most of them are coming to us from other kinds of customer service backgrounds, such as retail. Anyway, back to the show. All right, so on the revenue side, as you can see. The three, I wanted to give you some, um, levy comparisons. So the three that I chose were, Bill had asked to see what a flat levy would look like. So that is not changing our levy dollar amount at all, um, from twenty twenty two. So we started with that, um, and this. Um, and what that does for us is, so this draft shows that flat levy, it's five million, eight hundred sixty two thousand, four hundred and thirty eight dollars. So using our assumption of five point six percent. Actually, I think I'm jumping ahead here, but that's okay. I totally lost my focus. So our assumption at this point is that our total equalized assessed valuation of property in the district will, will increase five point six percent. That is the village's estimate, um, and so we are using the same one. As you know, as EAB increases, our tax rate decreases. Those, they're not directly inverse, but they're, they're pretty close. So as you can see, that this does bring us to, it's a, a flat levy because the, the levy would stay the same, the EAB would increase. That brings our tax rate down by five point three percent. Again, not directly proportional, so it's not the five point six, but it's close. And then what that does to our average homeowner. So for your average homeowner, which is here at our three six, eh, three hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred, um, there, if the equalized assessed valuation of property, um, does go up as we anticipate, your average homeowner would actually pay twelve dollars and twenty three cents less in twenty twenty three for the library than they did in twenty twenty two. And again, per, for your fair market value, this is per hundred thousand dollars of fair market value for the home, so that you can do some easy math. Um, so someone in a million dollar home, it would be about thirty six dollars per year, their, um, property taxes would go down.
Julie, just understand this math. This is the twelve, I'll use the median home value.
Yes.
The reduction of twelve twenty three is against the three sixty, right? So if the, if the EAB increases, it would.
Yes, and this.
So this is where it's a little bit funny math, right?
Yes, and so generally, when your EAB is increasing, that is driven largely by new construction in your property. So when you do the levy, it's spread over the value of all the property in the district, and that's how they back out the tax rate. So in individual, if your individual homeowner's assessment did not change, and that's the assumption we make here.
It did, and you won't realize a net reduction in taxes.
Exactly.
Which includes if your neighborhood increases.
Quadrennial reassessments are the big one.
Quadrennial, yeah.
Yeah, so it depends on where you personally are in the cycle. And whether your home is increasing or decreasing in value. But, you know, that's so hard to predict, so we just go with, with the flat. It makes the math easy. I'm not a mathematician. In any, uh, in anyone's, that's the name, especially my son. So this is the. So this is the, so with, so at the estimated tax rate of .1916, I did include this rate, levy, and EAV history and going back quite a bit, because that way you can kind of look at what we've done with this over, how this has gone over time. And this would represent our lowest operating tax rate since 2012, and the lowest dollar amount per $100 of library home value since 2010. So always interesting to see how that, and, and remember that these dollars are not adjusted for inflation, so that's straight-up dollars. All right. So the next, any questions on the flat levy? And we'll just jump in. So the next one is, oh, and for, sorry, for the flat levy draft, that uses almost our entire fund balance. It would bring our year-end is estimated to be about $140,000, which is well under the $455,000 operating reserve that's called for in our finance policy. However, we could consider not making the annual transfer to the Library Capital Replacement Fund in 2022, in which case the library fund balance would meet the operating reserve. So.
Which would kick the can down the road.
Which kicks the can down the road. Going for a flat tax rate would try to hold that tax rate even from 2022 to 2023. So using that 5.6% EAV estimate, the levy would increase 5.6% to just about, just under $6.2 million. But that brings us, that's as close as we can guesstimate would bring us to a flat tax rate from year, year-over-year.
And have your attention please. A library will be closing in 15 minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first-floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in 15 minutes.
And for the average homeowner, this is, this is attempting to do a zero impact. So this would be, as long as your, your personal EAV did not change, as long as the assessed value of your home did not change, you would pay the same as last year. And then, and then in, in the historical view, that brings us to, to looking at how our tax rate has actually, the operating tax rate has fallen every year since 2016. And we are currently, this would be, hold at approximately the 2013 tax rate. So that, that was the last time we were, we were there, or.
And this scenario leaves our fund balance at which right where I need to be.
Yes. And this scenario shows the fund balance being just over where the operating reserve would call for in the finance policy, plus it would allow us to make the transfer for the capital replacement fund. All right. And then, just to show our year-over-year, the final draft that I did was actually to balance the expenditures and revenues. So using our revenue estimates, not utilizing any fund balance for the 2023 budget. And what that does to us is that is a 7.15% increase. Now, with our anticipated, as long as we get there, on the 5.6% EAV increase, that mitigates the impact on our tax rate to about 1.5%. And it also holds it for our average taxpayer at about $3.39, or 99 cents per hundred, for 100,000. So a million-dollar home would see a $10 increase is our guesstimate here. And that increase would actually bring us up to nearly our 2020 rate. So here you can see that our rate, tax rate in 2020 was actually .2103. So we wouldn't even be back up to the 2020 rate then for operating. Thoughts?
We're doing it in your spare time.
Dealing with patron behavior issues. So there are a lot of different ways of going about this. Now, in the, in that balance draft, that would actually bring our library fund balance would be well, more than $100,000 over our operating reserve target. So at this point, I think we can safely adjust the revenue line for personal property replacement tax up just a little bit, which can help ease a little bit of this. Beyond that, I'm looking for any and all feedback.
One comment about the inflationary pressures, that, I mean, that, that is, by most economists' view, expected slash hoped to mitigate by 23. So we're feeling the brunt of that this year, and to your credit and your staff's credit, we're under our budget for the year, right? Our projection for the end of the year is a healthy, a healthy amount under budget.
Yes.
Which is great. So we've, we've absorbed, and again, double kudos, we didn't know, last year the inflation was supposed to be transitory, right?
Yeah.
So we absorbed an unforeseen sustained period of inflationary pressure, and we're under budget. So that's great news. That's not expected to continue into next year, so without, without leading in on which, what level of levy we should, we should levy. I don't think like continued inflationary pressures is the reason to do that. That may have reset the bar, but we've really done a great job absorbing it. So that's my first observation. The second one is, I know the, I thought I saw, I can't find it off the top of my head, but I saw the, the total FTEs stayed steady at 66, I think, if I remember.
Yes. It will, it will increase from 66.2 to 66.4.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
From 66.2 full-time equivalents to 66.4.
Oh, FTE.
So we're, we're moving some things around, but we're doing it through attrition and rolling positions together and, you know, we're, so we are able to make some more full-time positions. That's one of our internal equity goals, is to have path forward for staff and to have full-time positions at basically every level of every pay grade in the library, so that they're now.
Full-time salary?
Yes, to have full-time staff.
Full-time salary, or?
Full-time exempt and non-exempt. That's, that's those two different lines in there. So your, your non-exempt are paid hourly.
Yeah, our library has traditionally had much fewer full-time people than the vast majority of libraries in our, in the state, much less our category in the state.
Yes.
And not quite sure how that ever happened exactly, but.
Well, frankly, it was a long-term budget strategy that was shared, that was a kind of a philosophy that was shared among libraries in this area, in this hyper-local area specifically. Anyone who knows the Rails, the old Rails zones, it was zone one of the.
Most of them moved away from it quicker than we had.
Yes. And so these, this group of libraries very deliberately had fewer full-time staff and fewer part-time staff with benefits. They very deliberately held part-time staff to under 20 hours a week so that they did not have to give them the IMRF, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund benefit. Because as an Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund participant, we are at these 1,000-hour standards. So any employee who works more than 1,000 hours for us in a year must be enrolled in IMRF. And so they very deliberately used that strategy to control costs.
But the equity strategic plan kind of laid that bare.
Yes.
A little bit, and this group made a decision to move from that.
And it's something we've actually been working towards since I got here. We started increasing the number of IMRF positions and increasing the hours for positions and rolling them together so that we had, not only does it help the retention of staff, but it also gives us a lot more flexibility in backfilling the schedule. Because if you've got all these people who are working 18 hours a week.
A library will be closing in five minutes.
And they can't go over 20 hours. They can't take too many extra shifts to cover this person's sick and that person's vacation, because then they're, they're over that 1,000-hour standard. So it, it gives us a lot more flexibility to have some, some 20, 24-hour a week folks who have the capacity to take on extra shifts.
So with respect to the flat FTE level, usually when, you know, generalization, you convert full, part-time to full-time positions, you expect to get an efficiency gain out of those positions. Is the flat, nature of the flat FTE that we're offsetting what otherwise would be higher FTEs? You think so? So at some point in the future, as more automation comes to bear in operation, is it reasonable to expect that we'll be able to see a downtrend in total staff?
I don't know at this point. It really, today, I think that the strategic, our next strategic plan and the goals of that plan will really have that impact. This library has traditionally been very customer service focused and very focused on those more soft skill kinds of things, like readers advisory and programming, and where it is very much hands-on, there's a person who does it. I don't know that, that we'll be able to, to start reducing that headcount, but it, it really depends on where our focus winds up.
I mean, in general, like seeing that 70 number on the percentage of SPAM going to salaries, you know, trips my threshold on what is a typical balance of, thinking about this as a non-public sector business, right? What would be a healthy threshold? And I know it's different, but it's still hard to see.
Well, and the, actually, the former, the, the former standards that just went out last year, 60 to 70% was what they said you should be spending with salaries and benefits combined, and we were always just that little tick over it. And a large driver of that is also the fact that we have as a library, some of these decisions just don't make sense together, but they are long-term legacies for us. The library follows the villages' benefits structure and pays for not only employee, a significant portion, not only of employee health coverage, but also spouse, children, and family. And so that has been a huge driver for us.
Has there been any, speaking of that, has there been any update to the estimate on the benefits increase still?
No, not till, not till August. That's when the Village HR will have their first broker meeting.
Down with the conversation, but I got a couple more. I noticed the, the, I remember writing for me in the board packet, there's about a, rough numbers, about a 60, 40 utilization between children and adult resources, some of the book, book checkouts, something like, it was close to that. We're spending probably 70% more on adult services than children services? And I, I just wanted to understand maybe what drives that.
The adult books are more expensive.
Adult books are more expensive. Square footage and.
They take up more real estate, they, they cost more per item. You can definitely fit a lot more kids' books on a single shelf than you can.
And it's not just books, it's.
Books and.
Electronic resources.
Yeah.
For children are a lot cheaper than the ones for adults.
Yeah. The kinds of databases that we, electronic resources that we get for the children's department are a lot less expensive and a lot less extensive than we adults.
My last question is one that I had intended to email you, so I didn't sound like an idiot, but it's too late for that, so what's the different, what is access services versus circulation services?
Access services is actually, that's cataloging. That is the processing of the materials. So everything that comes in, any library material that comes in to this library goes through access services. It is cataloged, processed, barcoded, labeled, covered.
Chipped.
RFID-tagged and, and put into the catalog and then placed out on the public floor. So that's what they do. Circulation is the department that takes care of the actual in and out of the books to patrons. So they check in and check out every single thing that goes anywhere from us. And we do a lot of circulation. We, we typically do over a million items per year. We could not keep up with that if we did not have an automated materials handler, also referred to as the book sorter. And then we also do quite a bit of business with the interlibrary loan, and so our swan delivery, if you've ever seen the bins and bins of books, we're averaging 20 bins a day.
Is that for services also do the EAV sessioning, or is that?
Yes, yes, they do.
Yeah, automation has helped a lot in that, that area, the automated book sorter.
Yes.
Circulation area?
In the circulation area. The machine, the big machine in there, not only cuts down labor costs a little bit somewhat, but it also gets the books on the shelves much faster.
Yes.
So you get more circulation with fewer books, in effect. So it's a, it's a big help.
That was a great efficiency that they put in in 2014.
And the automated checkout.
Yes. Self-check helps us reduce the number of staff that we need at the checkout desk, et
We resisted that long-term on the library, or kind of resisted some of those things because, again, as Julie said, we've been heavy on the customer service for so long that the people-to-people thing, well, you know, people don't want to check out on a machine. that the people-to-people thing, well, you know, people don't want to check out on a machine, they want to check out with a person. Well, we were wrong. And the community has adopted those improvements very readily.
Well, and frankly, I think some of our, our most enthusiastic adopters of the self-checks were the small people because the small people like to use the barcode scanner. They want to do their own, I do it myself. And I think that really helped drive the adoption of self-check in, in public libraries. Thoughts? What do you want to see in August? That's really what it comes down to is what do you want, what levy do you want to see in August? What do you want me to present to you?
I should have, I should have been more clear about what I was, what I was looking for on a different level. I, I understand why you did it this way. But there, keeping the expenditures the same, obviously there are things, there are choices we can make to reduce the expenditures, like there are things we could do to hold the expenditures in line. And that's what's not present here. And so, you know, that, looking at the, obviously it would be unacceptable to drive the fund to the levels that are implied by the flat levy. But some balance between, you know, mitigating the levy and tightening up, tightening the belt on expenditures, I think is, is appropriate given where we are. It's like, you know, everybody's, everybody's making tough choices these days in business and in personal life. You know, we, my little bachelor pad is now home to a family of four and we need new bathrooms, but we didn't do it this year because things are too expensive. Construction costs are too expensive and all the materials are too expensive, labor costs are higher. And I think, you know, we just moved offices in our business and we had to, the, the one that we really liked, we would have had to build walls, so it ended up being a non-starter. And the one that we ended up picking, we, building new walls was off the table and we had to do a lot with creative furniture instead. We saved a bunch of money and made it work. I think people are doing that kind of things, all those kinds of things, all over in business and personal. And I think, you know, this would come upon us to kind of do the same, the same thing. So that's my only comment. I, you know, I, I understand that the way, especially the way it's presented, the flat levy sounds drastic. Anything higher than a flat rate, I would have a tough time supporting.
The, one of the, the only way to really move the needle on a library budget is to cut personal. That's, that's really it. And we run really lean. We always have. There are some ways that we can consider. I think they would take a longer implementation cycle than a single budget. And that is something that I think we can contemplate in this strategic planning process. You know, you look at our library, we have five public, or, we're down to four, public service desks. So four desks in this building that are staffed every hour that we are open. It's the service model that was chosen. And as a matter of fact, it was five service desks when I got here. We very deliberately abandoned the in-place, the information desk because that, the vision for that particular service point just never really panned out. But it comes down to what, what do you want us to stop doing?
Well, one thing I think that's changed and maybe more dramatically the last couple of years, but I think we've seen, seen it change over the last, since I started five, six years, is the, not only, so customer service improvement, there's also this element that we've talked about a lot here, which is the security and public safety and social services angle, which is something that we started doing very deliberately based on community needs, based on staffing, based on what, what's happening on, on the floor. And so that's something that's changed that I actually don't think we've changed the budget mentally to accept. When we did that last year, we integrated the, the new kind of safety and security model without changing the budget really. I mean, there was no personnel cost. I mean, the budget did not change in terms of the raw numbers, it just changed the way people were allocated. And that was something we started doing without actually changing the budget. So I think, I think to your point about like thinking about the future of our thinking of customer service, but also thinking of this new thing that really is, I mean, when you consider it customer service, it's just about making people feel welcome and safe in this public space that we all feel really strongly about in our community. So I just want to put that out there as something that's considered in thinking of strategic planning and also what we haven't actually really allocated money for, that we've absorbed as part of our operations without necessarily saying, well, this is a new landowner because it hasn't been, it's actually something we've absorbed. And we can't automate probably, right? And that's something we can, you know, put, put in kind of AI at least to help us accomplish unfortunately, or fortunately maybe for the public.
I especially appreciate the comment around, there are things we might do that might take longer than a, a single budget cycle, so you know, a lot of that can be strategic plan.
That's why we do the strategic plan.
And we do evaluate our staffing for our public service desks every year. We look at, at how many, how many actual staff hours there are for each desk and what kind of staffing level each desk requires. Most of our desks, the adult services desk is staffed at at least a minimum of two people at all times that we're open, whereas the computer health desk can be one person at every hour that we're open. But there does generally need to be someone around to take care of breaks and that sort of thing. So, so we are always looking at where are we with that as well.
Somebody else has a chance to talk, keep going. The, the capital improvement in, in the work areas. I mean, that's, it's a staggering increase over budget. It's 270% of what the budget was. And this is why, you know, not to be, not to, this is not sound great, but this is why I wanted to wait to do that transfer until we understood what the impact of total budget was so that if we wanted to spread that out over a longer period of time, that we had that flexibility. And I know, I'm assuming we can go back in the other direction if.
Oh, absolutely. And even if, even if the board budgeted that particular transfer, that does not happen automatically, that is something that we annually load up as, we're careful.
Right, right. And so that, and that's the, I mean, that's by, other than salaries, it's the biggest ticket item, I think, in the whole shooting match here. And maybe there is a, maybe there is a strategy. I mentioned what we did with our offices on, we avoided building walls and instead we invested in furniture, we saved a significant amount. You can do, there's a lot of creative office furniture out there that can create the same net effect without hard construction costs. So I, I just, I struggle with, again, you know, maybe the, maybe the belt tightening on a flat levy is too drastic, going much above a flat rate without doing some expense mitigations and some capital investment mitigations feels like irresponsible from a taxpayer standpoint.
So something toward that flat rate or below, or slightly below is kind of where your, or below, that's where your, your head is, okay.
The capital one, you know, I wish there was a way to make those numbers go down. I, I can't, after touring the areas and looking at the, the closets that some people are working in and, you know, I, I, I fear that if we, I'm, I'm sure we can find some nickels and dimes in there someplace, but as far as making considerable reductions in that, I'm afraid we would pay the price in staffing. Meaning in staff satisfaction and therefore staff retention and potential staff hiring issues. When, when you're trying to hire somebody and you show them the offices, the workspaces that they're meant to have, there's, there are a lot of, a lot of libraries in the area that are in a lot better shape than this. And so that's, I try to balance those, those issues. And we're, we're definitely a customer service model and, and if we don't make some improvements there, we're going to have people issues which affect the customer service. And that's, everything is so intertwined.
And I don't want to be dismissive of that or gloat about it. I can tell you what, I mean, having just gone through this, the trend in industry right now is gut the whole thing, so you have flexible workspace for all of time going forward. Don't build walls. And you could save a pile of money doing that and it can look really nice and be really functional. And there are too many walls.
Unfortunately, one of our issues is that we have too many walls. It's too, the spaces are too chucked up in the wrong, in the wrong, in the wrong places, yes.
But we are building, we are gutting and rebuilding new walls, right? We're going to add offices in one area, so, I mean, there are, the other thing about your point about, I wish we could make the cost go down, well, you can. You do that by waiting until the price of lumber isn't 600% high.
Well, and, and that is the one fantastic thing about the bid process is that should those bids come back and this board not be happy with them, we now have plans that we can wait six months or a year and rebid that project and see where things have gone with construction costs at that point. And that, that is a perfectly valid way to move forward.
Or, or we could go and pull in additional resources to say, what if this was for walls and you were doing this with modularized office equipment and furniture? What would that look like? Because you could create private spaces and create storage spaces and work spaces without building walls.
We, we did actually look at all options with our architect from the beginning to be able to look at how, how can we achieve these goals, get the right spaces for each of these disparate uses with the minimum amount of construction. And unfortunately, we've, we've grown in all the wrong places and the rooms that we have aren't even big enough to be able to like, you can't just flip-flop those workrooms or it, it just doesn't work.
Right, you also, you also provide equitable spaces for all of our managers. We want to provide safe spaces for people who need a safe space. Those are things that are really vitally important and I think that we shouldn't ignore those things either. I mean, I think that there's definitely a way to, to get better storage and to use modular units, but I think there, I don't want to ignore that there are, there are certain people or people who may be working in situations that are not, not equitable for them. And so I think that's important as well. But I don't want to ignore that that's happening. And, and to Dave's point, I don't want to lose people because, because they're, they've been asking for certain things that they need to do their job properly or be able to do their job efficiently and they're not getting those things. So I, I just want to make sure that we're, that we figure out the right way to satisfy both of those things. I don't know if it's possible.
And it's difficult to have departments that are spread where you have a staff member whose actual desk is in another department's workroom. We have multiple people. There are two other departments with workstations in the access services workroom today.
So to your point, we haven't spent it yet, we can get the bids and see where we lie, but I, I do want to emphasize that, that remains a safety valve.
Yes.
So if we, if we do something that we collectively feel is responsible from a taxpayer standpoint and we need that safety valve, then we have to have the fortitude to go there.
And then the other part of your statement, you're talking about, you're talking about the capital part, the smaller expenditure, just expense items. I don't know how much flexibility we have there. I mean, unless we, unless we cut the collection. It costs a certain amount to process a book. It takes so much tape and so much covers and, and stuff like that. It's, in fact, I've learned that we don't have a heck of a lot of flexibility in that.
And we're one of those organizations that, you know, when, when you get a new computer in its highest and best use, then the old one goes down to like the next lower use and down and down and down until they are so old they are completely unusable and that's when we get rid of things. You know, librarians are the ones who still have the old card catalog cards in a storage, in a box under a desk somewhere that they pull out to use as scratch paper.
And, and the IT type, electronic type resources that we're spending more and more money on are some of the more expensive things in our list and yet that's what our public is demanding. And it's frustrating almost, even wandering around the, some of the senior living facilities around here and seeing all the little old ladies with their electronic books.
But I think it's also an opportunity, right? To get more automated, more digitized. We can save, we have, we have to save in other areas.
Long-term. The, the, short-term, it's a little more difficult, but, and yet we're still talking about a small percentage of our, of our budget. But if there's any, anything in there that we need to consider economizing on, let us know. I'm not saying there's nothing in here that can't, I'm sure you're not saying. I don't think the bottom line of the, if you add it all up, it's going to be a little appreciable amount of money, but let's look.
So I think you did a nice job of summarizing where, at least my end.
Bottom line is, we have a pretty popular institution here for not a whole lot of money. I mean, I realize that part of us, we, we need to look at every, every piece because percentages are very important in the perception of the public looking at the library. But when you, but when you, you figure that we make this big massive change in our budget and it changes the average taxpayers' bill by $12. It, it brings reality both ways. So it's, it's a frustrating job. This is the hardest part of the job, obviously.
All right, so tighten up as much as we can. We will definitely make sure that we have our up-to-the-minute estimates on employee benefits and our salaries because as, as I said, we just keep hiring new people and people keep retiring and they have to stop making this a moving target. And we'll bring something back that, that is at that flat rate or hopefully a little below, especially with being able to adjust that PPRT number. That should, should give us a little wiggle room as well.
Again, kudos on the performance in a tough year because I think that gives hope that you can pull that off.
Our, our managers, our management team is amazing and they always have an eye on the bottom line and they're always trying to be as efficient as they possibly can and to make sure that, that those decisions on not only what they ask for in the budget process, but as they're going through the year, that they're making those sound decisions financially for the library moving forward. We just had a talk today with our ATS manager about a, a service that, there's a group purchase and there's been some, some ask for it from the public and, but she really doesn't feel that that's something that we should be putting money toward right now and that they, it got on maybe next year.
Well, wow, just, when I used to work in the IT business, I, I was in marketing and I traveled around a lot of different industries from farm-equipped manufacturer to insurance to public service and all these things. And I'm, I'm just amazed at the library industry and how much they do with book. And, you know, that's, that's the, part of the reason I'm not real optimistic that we're going to cut a whole lot of, out of the expense thing. Maybe capital, but long-term aspects of that troubles me. But we'll, we'll look. And as has been pointed out, we don't, we're not spending the money yet for budgeting it. So I'm sure that through the year, we're going to have some serious discussions on spending side. But I, it's very frustrating. So thank you for all your work and let's see if we can make it happen.
Well, I should say, I mean, the kind of keeping the taxpayer, you know, the, the flat rate model that you provided to the second model that you put out there, I mean, as a taxpayer, that's appealing to me as always this, I'm paying this, given all the other variables, we don't know, we don't know these other things, but that it's, it's appealing to say, okay, well, my, the amount that I'm contributing toward the library stays the same, even as I am seeing through discoveries, which is where, you know, where I get information, that we're expanding programs, we're expanding, you know, staffing, but in, in more public basic ways, right? Some of those things, I'm seeing more value for the money that I am spending through my tax, taxes. And I, as, as someone who works for nonprofit, to your point, Dave, you know, kind of, it's, it's amazing to see how much, you know, nonprofits and libraries and the public sector can squeeze out of, out of every last note card and every last person's hours and things like that. If we do end up cutting in any, you know, kind of, any of these various ways that we've talked about, I think it's important to communicate to the public what in fact we have to stop doing.
Oh, absolutely.
Because that, because the perception then becomes like, oh, well, yeah, your, your budget's staying the same or your budget's getting smaller, everything else is inflating, but you're doing great. But at some point it gets to the, you can't give anymore. There's, there's only so many more new things you can take on without letting go those old things. So that's why the strategic planning process is exciting because we can talk about what are those things that maybe aren't as valuable anymore or that we, we moved away from as a community, as a board, as a, as a staff. So I think that's just something, I, you know, again, like as, if, if we are tightening belts or keeping things more, you know, clean, let's make sure we're talking about if, if we lose a database, then, then we, then that database is, is no longer available and that's and here is why. Not that we need to, you know, it's not a press release or anything like that, but just being very forthcoming about that is so important because we're not getting these things for free. We're not giving our labor for free. This is all stuff that, this is input that we're, assets that we're, our value loss that we're putting into it.
All right. Well, I think I know what I need to do for August, so that's awesome.
I'd like to make a motion for a potty break.
You want to take five? Yeah. Take five.
The staff has locked the public restroom, but you're free to use our master restroom. So I'll show you where it's actually going to go to.
Yeah, watch out for the cleaners, they're around here somewhere.
Guess I'll stand up because everyone else is standing.
I feel sorry for the, for you.
Poor Ed. Our, our member of the public.
But our public relations presentation.
Yeah.
Maybe should we consider bringing first?
Yeah. Yeah, we probably should have.
Are you still, um, raising, is that a circulation numbers and check his name with his part team?
Um, uh, they're in the packet.
Okay.
I, I don't know that we're necessarily going to talk about them specifically, but if you, whatever the packet is.
I mean, from, from over the years, you know, talking about budgets, I always like to see the circulation in conjunction with budget. People talk about the budget as if it's.
It happens.
A cost center.
Yeah.
And it's not.
And there's so much that we do.
Right, right. The, the revenue is more than the dollars, it's services provided and so as the population goes up, the circulation goes up. That's the, as the public's saying, give me more.
Yes. And, and our public has been saying, give me more.
Right, right? So I think that's.
Well, there is, there is a statement we may need to start telling people when they ask for more of what it costs.
Yeah.
And yet, we don't want to make that a negative statement.
Well, plus so many people are, if somebody's trying to tighten their budget and they say, well, instead of, you go to the library and borrow it.
Well, yeah.
So if this serves the people, you take away that option from it and say, no, we're going to officially go buy instead.
Are you sure, Sydney? I guess I'll tell him to go back. Are you sure?
Yeah, of course I'm sure.
Well, it's particularly hard at this point to be kind of looking at statistics as your growth over time because the pandemic really just put this weird tank in the middle of all of our statistics.
Yep.
And now with inflation, that is again, a different venture, a different starting point of all of us.
And it, it changed the marketplace so much, too.
Yes.
That even coming out of the pandemic, it's a different world. And we're still trying to figure that out.
And still trying to get a handle on what people are, how people are using the library again. You know, things that were really, really, the, the one thing that, that really sticks with me is looking at our computer led usage numbers. Because so many people who didn't have a device at home before the pandemic now have a device they can't.
They now do, yeah.
But it also means that our Wi-Fi infrastructure needs a little TLC.
It's really stressed.
Thank God for that grant.
Did anyone see that segment on CBS News about the 21st Century Library?
Yeah.
Yeah, our, my boss shared it with all of us, um, and, you know, just we from a library and, um, I was just really proud because all the things they talked about, like the library of things and like all the, you know, services and social services, we're doing all of those. Like here's this national segment going, oh, look, this is the future. This is the future. This is so cool.
This is awesome.
Yeah. And, and all these fancy new buildings that people have. Probably always, and that's how we're doing it with, with the building that we've had in place and it's, you know, we're being innovative and stuff like that. It was really cool to see.
All right. Ready to go in?
Welcome back.
All right. We're on Agenda Titan 8C. Capital Needs Assessment Report 2017 to 2027 update. Yes. And really, this comes to codifying what we talked about back in May, when the board was talking about, when we were looking at adding this project in. I probably just should have had you guys say yes to it at that point. I don't know why it didn't occur to me, but according to the library law, the rules about having a special reserve fund, which is what our capital replacement fund is, we have to have a spending plan for that. And our capital needs assessment has been, has acted as that plan for us and we update it annually. So this is the annual update. Do you have any comments or questions?
It's basically tweaks because.
Yeah. And you said the flooring was, instead of four parts, two. It's down to two. Yeah. And we're thinking of doing that the same way that we're looking at possibly doing this workroom renovation project where it would be over the winter months, that that tends to be a very good time for a lot of the kinds of vendors that, the contractors that we're looking at to do smaller projects. And we count in that category for most of them. So doing it kind of between the two fiscal years works really well.
And I think that's a very good plan. I put so many of these in condo reserve funds and other, other corporate type reserve funds that they get kind of blurry to me at times because, but they're very valid things and it, it makes it possible for us to keep and plan capital expenditures so that we don't have to go to referendum, just like condos don't have to have special assessments. And so it's very worthwhile doing, but I get kind of dizzy looking at all the detail.
The exterior west window is slated for 2023. Those are the windows that are put up next to the side of the children's.
Hang on.
That's west.
Yes. And this is the thing that they discovered during the tuck pointing process, that there was some water infiltration happening in, and we stabilized, but this is the remainder of that, that window work. Do you?
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, they warned us about that and said, this is going to take more work. And it's partly an increase in wind, driven rain, a lot of driven rains and pushing rain in places that were used.
Anything in the operating budget that you would consider throwing good money after bad that is due to capital needs that we're not able to address? You know, like I, I'll give you an example, like the village hall, the boilers, right?
We did all those big ticket, we did those big ticket money pits. We, we were able, those were some of our biggest ones. The, the last one was actually the roof and that was the project that came in way, it actually came in way under budget because they were able to do a liquid membrane that did not require the full tear off. So that's really cost effective for us and.
Are there other things we could do capital-wise? I'll throw in solar treatments on those for reduced HVAC costs, anything like that out there?
Well, because we don't pay for electricity, that, because we have looked, we've actually priced out some solar things and looked at some grants, but a lot of them, because we don't actually pay for our electricity, they don't amortize the right way and we don't qualify for, for certain ones of those grants. Uh, yeah, so we have tried to get, to make sure that those kinds of projects are all in here. A lot of the lighting that was done. Yes. There was a large amount of rebates and such. I think Ian did a lot of that in-house. And the COMED Energy Efficiency Program that had both rebates for the actual materials as well as credits in, in that program. We, we did a lot of the lighting a lot cheaper than was originally contemplated in this.
As it were. Some things we did just because they made sense to do and they were green things to do, even though we don't pay light bills.
Yeah.
And I still have some hope somewhere along the line, maybe we could do some solar even though, but even though we don't pay light bills, we're still paying the price in direct place.
We, we still keep an eye out for all those grants and other opportunities that, that may be one that fits us eventually.
Yeah. But you pointed out the major changes here and there aren't a lot of them. We've looked at all of this before. You haven't put that on, but yes, questions that you have about.
I would expect that this will be, I believe that it'll be influenced by the strategic plan.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and as you can see, in a couple of years, it will be time to do a new one of these because it's kind of that ongoing capital. And I will tell you that the one thing that is not in there, that in the long term, we will need to make sure that we have enough money for, is the automated material handler because at some point that will need to be replaced. That's a big chunk of money, right? Yeah, that, I mean, even the service contract for it's a big chunk. It's a million dollar machine.
Is it a parking lot or?
Nope. That belongs to the village.
It's a village, it's not a library lot, it's a village-owned lot.
They refer to it as the library lot.
What is the lifetime on a library building? What's the, like, do we have a date in the future, 2075, when we expect to?
There, there are different schools of thought.
What is it like, where are we going to look like in 2017?
Yes. And generally, the kinds of projects that we are doing are to extend the life of this building and its useful life for the maximum amount of time. Generally, you get 50 years, but libraries have got 100. So it, it depends on if your aggregate space is enough for your community. This community is fairly landlocked, so we're not adding a lot of people. So the building size, at least in the foreseeable, is the right size.
Is it wrong, 1970 something?
Um, it was actually 1977 and then added to in 1999, renovated most of it in 2014. And then the things they left out of 2014 were done in 2018. And then, and that was the impetus of the capital replacement fund, so. And we have done, we have recently done the HVAC, the boilers, the roof, the lighting, the lighting control panels. We're about to do the elevator. So really, we're, we're trying to hit all those big systems so that we're, we're good for another 20 years out here.
And back in the 90s, there were also some other major decisions made about customer service levels and staffing and that sort of thing. And of course, the big one was, do we have branch libraries or not? That decision was made back then too, when the communities said, we're pretty happy with that in the library right downtown. And as our interpretation of the community, we actually did some polling and so on. So I think some other communities around us have implemented several branches, mobile libraries, things of that sort. We haven't done that because our customers weren't asking us.
Yes. And the common wisdom generally with libraries is, you need a library within about a 15-minute drive from any place in your service area. Well, most of Downers Grove is within that and without traffic.
Can't get.
And train without.
Can't find parking, but.
Without a train and.
Motion to approve the capital needs assessment report 2017 to 2027 updated to approve current projects and estimated costs. So.
Caitlin, can we have the local?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Clintia?
Yes.
Trustee Nambur?
Nambur, yes. I'm tired.
I'll answer the, I'll answer the, I know.
President Gagami?
Yes.
I have number nine, unfinished business. Strategic planning request for proposals, sorry. This is getting late. This is way beyond my bedtime.
So the major changes here, I did update the background statement and then we added the additional information about the deliverable.
Thank you.
We found some good language.
I appreciate those discussions. Thanks for coming back, Chris. Any questions on this item?
I have none.
Do we have a motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the strategic plan request for proposals presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve strategic plan request for proposals. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call?
Actually, you can do this one by voice vote.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Call this opposed and extensions. All right, so that motion passes with a voice vote. Item 9B, workroom renovation project released to bid.
So we have kind of the general plan. We do not have the full bid specifications. We won't have those until next week. The specification package, but we have the drawings. We know what's going to be in it. So we feel confident that we can move forward with the bidding process if that works for you all. And again, you don't have to accept any of the bids.
Like we discussed in, you know, all the budget talks, they think the best way to move forward is just to kind of get that final dollar amount and kind of go from there.
We need to move from estimates to bids.
Yeah.
And make some decisions based on that. And the longer we wait, the higher it will be at this stage of the game. Unless we, no matter how long we wait, they're going to be higher. So I think we need to do that.
Is that a motion?
I will move that.
One second. All right, we have the motion and the second. Is this a voice vote as well? All right. All those in favor of moving the workroom renovation project to bid, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and any extensions. All right, that has been approved. All right, item number 10, library director.
We still have a vacancy. If you haven't seen the arcade cabinet up in the teen central area, go play some classic video games. It's pretty cool. The branding and all of the fun stuff will come soon. If you also have not seen our Forever Four, the Beatles exhibit with Republic Bank, that's upstairs. It's fantastic. The actual Beatles program is tomorrow evening. And Swatno is on Cover to Cover Podcast, so she is our July featured person. And then I will be in August, so looking forward to that. And if you want to attend Illinois Library Association Annual Conference Trustee Day, that will be Thursday, October 20th, at the Rosemont Convention Center. So other than that, I think we're just ready to hand it over to Public Relations Manager Cindy Catry.
I'm very excited that you guys have this meeting.
I'm so happy. I'll make it quick, but I am happy to talk at length about my department if anybody wants to swing by and come say hi. So I'm going to stick to my notes just to make sure I don't go off on my tangents, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. So PR, well, first, I'm Cindy Catry. I'm the manager of the Public Relations Department. PR is a team of three individuals. I have, we have myself, Brian Ruin, who is the Marketing Content Coordinator, and Grace Goodwin, who is our Graphic Design, Graphic Design and Display Coordinator. So we serve the public and our staff by sharing the library's news. So that's like programs, service updates, initiatives, clearly, efficiently, and mindfully. Often, we are the first and last touch point that patrons have with the library, whether that be through the website, through our discoveries newsletter, our social media, or even just through our signage. So in PR, we look at ourselves as a department that really has to balance and work with the duality to serve both the internal staff and the external patron. So I'll go over kind of our external services and then I'll hit on the internal. So primarily, we're responsible for communicating to the public what's going on at the library. That's our programs and our services primarily. And we do this in a variety of ways, but really it breaks down into two different branches. We focus on marketing. And that is increasing our usage, encouraging people to come and get library cards and come to programs. We do that through using the website, through press releases, our e-news, social media. We have our Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. We use our discoveries newsletter, signage, our Cover to Cover Podcast, outreach brochures, outreach events, et cetera, et cetera. And then we also have the Public Relations Branch of, and like side of our department, which is really building an awareness of who we are as an institution, increasing our brand awareness, making sure that our reputation stays strong in Donner's Grove, and maintaining relationships throughout the community. And that's with community partners and of course with the patron themselves. So we do this through initiatives like our Organization of the Month, outreach initiatives, responding to comments and conversations and questions from the public. And that sometimes gets into where the reputation management aspect comes in as well, because we get a lot of questions sometimes about what we're doing here. And then, of course, our community partnerships. So that definitely includes the village, but that also includes organizations like PADS, the Midwest Soaring Foundation, the schools, the Park District, and others. And then, of course, we also have the gallery, which is incredible, and we showcase a lot of artists' work, local organizations through there as well. We also take care of the branding of the library and we have a style guide that we maintain and help the rest of the library kind of navigate to make sure that we are, making sure that we are a reliable organization. And, you know, we're overseeing how it's used. And we look at the messaging and the tone of all of our pieces. So we tend to think of the library as having a voice and a personality of its own. We consider ourselves modern yet traditional, clean, approachable, sometimes a little funny, or we try to be. But above all, we try to be transparent as well. We try to make it as easy and user-friendly for the patron. And we don't want anybody to ever feel like they didn't understand what was happening or what was available to them. So things that we maintain daily in our department are signage, website, our social media accounts, the cafe display monitor, chalkboard, regular emails. And then we oversee a lot of other projects that are happening simultaneously. So that includes maintaining our style guide, other less frequent communication outlets, like those press releases, our community partnerships, the printing service, the poster service, that is all through our department, mailing permits and routes with discoveries. Of course, the appearance of our brand and our building. For example, what do our hole blockers look like? We had to design that wrap and work with a business to make sure that that was not only approved and appropriate with the village, but still reflected who we are and what was actually within that service point. Things like our wayfinding signs that we just updated, you know, we look at the signage throughout the library and see, is this a user-friendly and intuitive thing that patrons will look at and be able to utilize without confusion or, or maybe ignoring it completely. And then we also help out with services like the cupboard, which has been really appreciated by a lot of community members. So moving forward to the internal side of our department, we also help a lot of, well, and when I say a lot of, I mean all of the other departments in the library and support them in their work. So there are the obvious ways, like marketing their programs and their services, but then there are the less obvious ways, like creating every single graphic that happens on our marketing pieces or creating templates for the presentations that they're giving at the schools. We use a help ticket software, so departments can submit when they need help with something, and that really helps to navigate everything. And at any given time, we have somewhere between like 20 and 40 open tickets, and those come in very frequently. And then, of course, we also assist the foundation and the friends when they need things promoted or looked at. So in terms of who does what in our department, we all really support and pitch in with each other. We're all responsible for sitting on numerous staff teams and then reporting back to each other as well. So communication is key with us. Like I said, it's only three of us. We're really close knit and we work very, very, very closely. So I take care of the workflow in the department, including frequently working with other departments as well to kind of see what's coming down the pipe, how are we going to navigate this workflow and what's going to be happening. I take care of most of the website updates, a lot of the catalog changes. So anytime you see those book lists changing on the catalog, any placards on there, that's all coming through our department. I take care of the community outreach and the partnerships, like the Organization of the Month, and then general outreach as well. And then Grace takes care of designing the print materials. She formats discoveries. She takes care of designing original artwork that is on-brand and still representative of what we do. And then she also helps to maintain and to schedule the gallery and window displays. And then Brian is our Marketing Master, who takes care of the social media, the e-news registration for our programs is really driven by him. That Beatles event that we have tomorrow is over 100 people registered, so we're very excited about that. And then he copy edits discoveries and he also helps with outreach. So it's already five to, five to 10. I won't bore you with all of the amazing projects we've been doing, but I'd be happy to talk about them at any point. So does anyone have any questions?
No, just a comment that the last strategic plan had some pretty strong statements in and about getting the library outside the walls of the building. And Cindy and her group have done a good job of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
How difficult has it been to get the discovery out in eight pages?
It is so hard. There are many times where we have to go to our programmers. In fact, every time, we have to go to our programmers and say, which programs do you want to cut from the print version? Because we don't have enough room to feature everything that you're offering. I look at this as a frustrating but good problem to have, that we are, we have so much opportunity for people to come and enjoy the library that it's hard to fit it in an eight-page piece. But it is really hard, because I look at discoveries as, it's really the only print marketing that we do. And it's an accessibility issue in my mind. If somebody doesn't have the internet or access to a computer or smartphone, this is their way to experience the library. So I always have a hard time going to somebody saying, which program do you want those individuals to not see? Similar with our services. There are times when I will have to cut substantially how much text or information is given about a certain service so we can get other information in there. The motivator for our marketing survey last year was really to understand how people use discoveries. So we could understand, maybe we don't need as much information about services, or maybe we don't need to have descriptions for all of these programs. And it was really interesting. I feel like it was very evenly split. A lot of people did talk about how they like hearing about just the general services of the library and what's happening and what's changing. And it makes them feel like they are part of this library community. And then, of course, as expected, a lot of people use it for programs. And we hear that anecdotally as well when we're talking to patrons.
I'm just curious what the most surprising thing that has been about your work since kind of the pandemic. What has kind of come out that you hadn't expected before that's changing the nature of your work?
Sure. I think that something I really didn't, because when the pandemic hit, my department was like on full blast all the time, you know, because we were doing all of that messaging about what are the different service changes and everything like that. And so the things that really snuck up on us, I guess, are in this reopening, because as other departments had to really shift and change the way that they work, for example, virtual programming. You know, there are a lot of patrons who don't want virtual programming to go away. So now we're still having to promote these additional services, but we are going back to promoting the same capacity of the in-person. So it's really added to how much my department is having to just watch and promote and keep our eye on. And so that's, it's not really something you hear about with the pandemic too much, is that it like increased that, but it has impacted my department greatly. Excellent question.
Every time the discoveries comes out, I almost can count on within a couple of days, people I, you know, I'm in the community a lot, and so I bump into a lot of people. And one thing, a few days after the discoveries comes out, I'd have people coming up to me and say, I didn't realize you were a library trustee. They don't focus on that and they don't ask me questions about circulation or budgets or things like that. They ask me about a program that's in the discoveries. And so I have to read it. I don't try to answer all the questions. I refer them to the appropriate places in the library. But I'm just always surprised how many people read that. And they read about the programs and then they ask questions about the program. And I just think it's a great document.
Yes, Donner's Grove loves the printed newsletter. We hear all the time about families who put it on their refrigerator and look at it all the time. Their kids will like practice writing by writing out the list of what programs they want to go to. It's, it's really amazing to hear the ways that discovery is looked forward to. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Cindy, Cindy.
Thank you.
Item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information.
Said too much already.
I have, I have one. I'm surprised, I never knew, the number of incidents that happened. Maybe it's, maybe this is an unusual period. That's full moons. We're surprised too.
2022 has been ridiculous.
I mean, this is really a very, very new phenomenon, like in the past year. I think incidents were never even a thing we talked about up until.
Until the pandemic.
Anti-maskers and then, yeah.
And now coming out of it, their behavior is just.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's not, it's not a complete disconnect with the trends in society, the increasing availability, unavailability of counseling services and things like that. So I hate, I hate to go there, but what, what have we done, and maybe we could, I don't know if this is a quick answer or a question for information, but have we, do we have active shooter plans? Do we have things like that that in this day and age, it's terrible to have to think about that? My kids come here.
My church has one.
Yes, we are, as a matter of fact, we are doing, and we've done it in the past, but we are bringing it back. We're doing active shooter training with Bill Budd's and the Donner's Grove Police Department. On the 26th of August, we will be doing a Staff In-Service Day, closing the library. It's one of the days that we're anticipating that the elevator will be down, so we're just going to do a Staff In-Service Day and a full day of training and that.
Same, it's a lot of the same lines. We've done, and we, this is something that schools do, they've got a risk assessment of the facility and the ability to go into a lockdown, the ability to.
We have had the, the police department do walk-throughs with our, with our security staff. We have had some consulting in that. Yeah, that's not one that we ever want to kind of, kind of play and do, but we do in this day and age.
So kind of like go off of what Phil just mentioned and go back to kind of, not to overburn our meeting, but to go back to the thing we started, you know, the incident and kind of the discussion we had around it and how uncomfortable it was for all of us to. and how comfortable it was for all of us to understand what it was and also kind of landing on a penalty in a manner. Given that this new safety and security model is fairly new and we have some new staff in place, I wonder, I, you know, you said earlier, Julie, like it's impossible to kind of be exhaustive in all of their behaviors and listing them and figuring out where they fit. But I wonder if it's worth a review of that document that we were looking at. I don't know if it's the book that sent the new staff coming in the place.
Yeah, it's already out, the second version.
Oh, is it really? Okay, yeah. I'm just, I'm thinking like, this, it's unfortunately, we've seen a lot more in the last year. We're not going to see the end of it, and the more we have these discussions, the more we have these odd things that don't fit neatly in a category. So I'd love to hear more about like what they're thinking and how they're evolving their model of providing service.
That's a takeaway that I'm going to bring to you tomorrow. Obviously, there's a hole in our infractions and our, and so where can this fit? And we're always looking to expand that. But it's, like we've said earlier, it's really hard for, to name every single thing.
Of course.
It's so hard. But we're doing our best, and so this, this is an opportunity to talk about it.
I think it's easier to handle a thing with the guidelines versus rules, because the rules just, you can't anticipate all of it. To your point, you don't necessarily want to codify. You need one for really weird behavior. Gets a.
Well, unfortunately, there are more people in staff kind of being aware of these things, or documentation. So at least we have, like you said, an opportunity to say, oh, well, there are patterns or there aren't patterns. And just having more eyes on the floor, I think, is just really.
Patterns would be helpful. These one-offs.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, with a lot of them.
Yes.
But our managers on duty and building operations monitors meet together quarterly. And one of the things that we do is we discuss if there are patterns of behavior. Is there, is there something that came up that we didn't have a guideline that fit? Is there something that we need to change? You know, what's working and what's not working?
What's cool with our PIT software, too, is we can all report space not infractions. So we can see the percentage of, you know, maybe of.
The infractions that fit in this category versus the infractions in that category.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a different world, and hopefully, maybe even as the world continues to shift a little bit, it'll settle back a little. But, I mean, I never thought, I keep mentioning, because I happen to be on staff at a church, the one that's out across the street from here. I never thought I would have an active shooter program at a church. I never thought we'd have a code of conduct for a church and things like that. It's, it's a different world. It is a struggle for a library or for a church or for any organization to maintain the customer-centered programming in the midst of all of that. And the welcoming, we welcome everybody, almost, and you have a code of conduct. So it's, it's tricky, but it's reality. But I think most of the organizations, most of the bigger organizations are kind of on top of it, at least. But they have to tweak it every couple of weeks, almost.
And layering out that equity, obviously, that's important, too. It's got to be really challenging.
Difficult. Any other comments or questions? We wrote in German, item number six.